Okay.
All right, Billy, I'm.
Really? Swing for, uh, it's usually a few seconds delay. Two K five.
Oh, these are from the order, right? Okay, are we, are we gonna talk about these or? Oh, yeah. For you.
Mark. It's live. You wanna switch it to the input now just to make sure it continues?
Sure, we could try that.
And begin presentation.
Hey, Billy, I'm not seeing anything. I have it on my phone, it's working. So what am I missing here?
Yes, and then we're gonna do, so we'll still be in the meeting.
It's more. Well, I'm just wondering if people can get it on the outside, if I can't get it.
I just put it on my phone, it's working.
HDMI one, right?
Yeah. If you could look at the. Before.
Okay, so we'll be in the meeting.
Therefore, on this one, she.
Inside, that's it. Technology.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna kick off on seven oh four, seven October. Good, the Newfield Select Board. Uh, we'll do introductions, Hovey Harmon, Chair of the Board.
Mark Casper.
Catherine Tenos.
All right, couple items. I need everybody to come to the microphone. Uh, every now and then, somebody gets obstinate and chooses not to. People at home cannot hear what is being said if you don't come to the microphone because it comes garbled with the superior acoustics that we have in here, and it also complicates the issue for, issue when she's trying to do the minutes on the following time. Uh, before we go any further, I do wanna make a point of thanking PD, the Fire Department, and everybody from Fall Festival. It seemed to turn out very well, kudos, and much appreciation for that. Uh, one thing that I do wanna address before I go any further, uh, there's been a couple of instances lately where people have had issues with things that had transpired with the individuals or departments that work for the town. And they have taken that frustration and they have pointed it at their office downstairs. Both to Sue and Akeisha, and Donna hides behind her plants, so she's good. But it is unacceptable to bring that level of frustration and aggravation out on these ladies who work in the Town Hall. They do a superior job for us, and if there is an issue that somebody has, then they need to bring it to my attention or another member of the board, and we will deal with the issue. But I strongly, strongly, strongly request that anybody that has an issue do not take it out on the ladies downstairs. They are incredible employees and their work effort is above and beyond. So I'll leave it at that. Uh, next item on the agenda is the library trustees with their budget.
Guys. So we're gonna need. The computer.
Yep. If you wanna plug it in again, you're ready to go.
Okay, you got your computer?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, actually.
Why aren't we gonna do it?
It's pretty straightforward, you should plug that into the computer and it'll show.
So, Winfreen, Library Trustee. Um, so just this, what we're gonna try and go through is at first, and the, I sent this in an email, this agenda to the Board of Select, uh, discuss the library staffing direction and needs for FY twenty six and beyond, right? This is an overview, so we're reviewing Brittany's budgetary needs and review for FY twenty six and beyond. She's done an amazing job pulling together a variety of information for us tonight, has a great presentation. What I really appreciate everybody doing is just holding the questions till she's done. But she's got a number of slides, we don't have a lot of time. We'll make this as a public session, so it's public information. We'll send it to the town, so people can review it, and you can review it your own time. We'll definitely take time, question at the end, but there's a lot to go through, so please just hold off till then. Uh, then it's really discussing an overview of roughly what we're thinking. We'll get this in the presentation, staffing and next steps. The needs, not the wants, and next steps. Um, quickly review budgetary FY twenty six inputs. Uh, really, there's a question mark on discussing utility, utilities. Is Donna here? Okay, um, and current budget practices, discuss maintenance and line item inputs, we touched on that moments ago. Um, discuss needs and next step for line item inputs. And then obviously, we're, we wanna talk about a CIP plan, um, going forward. So that's it, this next step. I don't know how much time we have, how much time? How much time do we have? How much time?
You're going and we'll, we'll work it.
You're not late, it's not connecting.
It's freezing.
It's freezing, okay. I was wondering.
I'll let it tell.
This is, yeah, utilities and building expenses, not the full budget, we will get that again, there's not enough time to go through all of it. We are working on a lineup, and again, our consultant's like, hey, you forgot how much the entire budget, the library costs to run. And I have to say publicly that the friends have done an incredibly, you know, the years funding the library. Programs, books, projects, et cetera, like, an absolutely incredible job, and Brittany has a slight touch on the non-employment here. Big kudos to the breakfast.
There he is.
I've got it back, Bill. I've got it back.
It is streaming, yeah, cuz it says had to end, end meeting on the top, so it looks like it's live.
Give a second, I'm gonna use some of that. For the meeting.
It's my turn, maybe?
See much of this, really?
No.
None of that.
And then. You wanna share it with me?
Google.
It's like drugs. So, if you're to have, oh, it's. Wait, wait. Hmm, where's the meeting? Good.
It's ninety minutes. I'll just pull up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Google. Okay, you guys. Good, it's fine. What do I mean? Yes.
Thank you.
Shining really like cats.
Hey, you're funny.
Uh, she wanted to find her discussion item, that we could do in time.
Sorry, guys.
All good, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm Kent Lawrence and part of the organization that runs the contra dance here at the Town Hall. One of the things, and you brought it up earlier, is about the acoustics in the Town Hall. And in various other places where there's dance activities with acoustics problems, they will hang, if you will, banners or, uh.
Absorbers.
Absorbers. And I noticed that we have two hooks, I don't know that that's enough, and it might disturb the light, but the contra dance people are indicating they'd perhaps like to try hanging stuff up here. Uh, my concept is that we find a piece of rope, stick to be able to put it up, assemble it, and then there would require to be a cleat, perhaps one of the sides or the other, to pull it up tight. And I just wanted to run that by the Select Board and see if us doing that is something that would be permissible.
Let me address that in two ways, one, Lieutenant Blais and I have had a couple of conversations about the acoustics in here.
Yeah.
And he is working on finding folks that can do an assessment of the acoustics and possible solutions that isn't work, uh, because it isn't just for your contra dancers. I don't know how you hear with all the thumping you guys do. Um, but we're trying to find a solution for long term, I wouldn't have an issue with trying that as a temporary solution, I don't, rest assured.
Yeah, it's something that I have seen done in, in other places. My immediate reaction is that we might get shadows because of the, the height of the curtains or bedspreads, but comforters, you kind of think something with some thickness to them.
I think that can be adjusted, I think it would be a trial and error issues, I mean, just trying to.
Yeah.
Then amended as necessary, uh, I wouldn't have any issue.
Worth an experiment.
I'll, and. Oh, it's just, how are you hanging it, you're, you're putting it up with like a painter's stick? Cuz someone getting up on a ladder is not a, not a good.
Oh, no, 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 no. Uh, yeah, I'm, that's my concept is an extendable pole, we hook one end, hook the other, loop the other end over and then pull. Uh, as I looked in here and coming in here, I'm thinking, if I put a cleat behind that doorstop there, uh, that would give us a chance to hook both ends, pull it up.
Why don't you come up with some ideas and run a bias or show me some pictures or thoughts or ideas? And see.
No, no, I just put a string up there and hang a some, hang a per.
No, but I, but I don't think we.
You can't, you can't, you can't understand that.
And take it down when.
That was simple enough.
Take it down when you're done with it?
Yes.
After the contra dance?
Yes.
Instead of linking it up there.
All in favor, say aye.
Taking it down when you're done with it, so we.
Yes.
Worth it. Figure it out.
It's time and.
Figure it out.
Worth an experiment.
Let's work together on this and find a solution, how's that? I will come in.
That's wonderful, I just wanted to introduce that idea and see where we get with it.
Okay.
And, and I'll have to talk to Bill.
Too bad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. When?
Yeah.
Here goes.
I think the technology is up.
Oh, well, yes.
All right.
Okay, so, um, the board and I have put together, um, a presentation on our existing budgetary needs and the strategy looking forward into the future. Um, some of you may know, we conducted a community survey at the end of twenty twenty three to gauge um, the community needs and impressions of the library, so we built us some of the top three. And so I walked you through that and then also, um, walked through current, um, budget levels compared to comparable libraries in the area and to compare those to the existing, uh, community demands and needs that we see going forward. Um, so the twenty twenty three survey, we had a hundred and thirty six responses. There's over a hundred people taking time to give us their comments, feedback. Um, and some of those results are as follows, we asked them, given the size of the library, its current condition and furnishings, do you believe the library is suitable for Newfield's future needs? Thirty percent say that it is less than adequate for the future, and less than twenty percent say that the need is more than adequate. We asked, do you believe the library has the necessary financial resources suitable for Newfield's future needs? Thirty eight percent say the budget is not adequate, twenty percent said they're not sure, with multiple comments saying seems low. We asked, um, the library has three part-time employees working to keep the library open, we are operational thirty five hours per week. The library director position is part-time, non-benefited, do you believe the library has the necessary human resources suitable for Newfield's future needs? Fifty five percent say no, fifteen percent are unsure. Um, we also asked about what they want the library to be beyond, uh, just books. Traditionally, libraries, of course, offer books and information and materials, but they also function as community center for local residents and groups to meet, uh, including offering programs, events, et cetera. We asked if the town should believe this is the model we want here in Newfields. They were founding yes. We also asked, the quality of this school, library, and recreation facilities in town add to the value of my home and the overall quality of my life in Newfields. Again, unexounding, over ninety percent agrees that the library contributes to the value of this town. We closed by asking, what do you believe should be in the library's priorities to improve over the next three years? And those answers will additionally help us as we plan our strategic. Um, their top five priorities were more books, more programs, more digital resources, and updated building, and a full-time director. Um, and just to summarize them, see, take ways, it's pretty common when you're giving a community survey of this nature for respondents to say, we want more and more, we want more books, we want more programs, more services. It was unexpected to see that there is a strong desire for a full-time director, even over more open hours, which is typically the number one answer. Uh, so our understanding from that survey is that the town generally understands that the library is a good one, it is well-heeled, it is well-loved, it is small, probably underfunded, and short-staffed. Um, so I just wanted to go through a couple of numbers for the library at its last for where we are right now. Um, we currently have three hundred and seventy five households with an active library account. That represents about fifty, eighty percent of Newfield's households of library members. Last year, we authored two hundred and nine library programs, which represented a thirty percent increase in attendance for in-person events as well as a three hundred and fifty six percent increase in total programming participation, cuz we also added additional virtual programming. So we had nearly six thousand people, uh, in total who participated in our library programs last year. Based on those numbers and the feedback that we're receiving in the community, um, myself and the board have outlined, um, some key strategic priorities. Interior updates is one of them, we've already made progress on that. Our next focus is establishing budget increases for our board strategic focus, both to meet community needs and demand as well as allow for sustainable operations, because we are currently understaffed. And if we are looking to grow and meet the demands that we are seeing, especially at the rate and increase in demand we see so far, we, um, will need to rate cut. Um, so now I just wanna quickly go over, um, the current library budget versus our actual operating expenses. So that means, um, what is the town currently appropriating from the taxpayer base? And how much does it actually cost to run the library? So the town appropriates just over seventy three thousand dollars a year, but our total cost to operate is over one hundred thousand dollars. Those funds come from our trust fund as well as library, friends of the library. And everything. I also wanted to highlight, since I know that budgets are a tricky thing, everybody wants more money, why is it important to invest in the library? And one of the best ways I can underscore that is the value you get for every dollar invested. You're getting a three hundred and thirty two percent ROI, so for every dollar you invest in the library, you're getting over three dollars back in value. Um, so for our budget of seventy three thousand dollars, we're getting nearly three hundred thousand dollars in economic value to our town. Um, we also did some comparison analysis to look at comparable libraries in Seacoast area of similar size. Um, those are listed below, the average total operating budget of these comps are two hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy one dollars compared to our seventy three thousand dollars, seventy three thousand. In countercreations. That is sixty five percent below average budget. When comparing staffing budgets, the average staff, so that's not the total operating budget, but just the portion that we pay for payroll, um, comparable libraries spend just under a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for their staff, and we invest seventy. Um, and as part of that, we also calculated the cost for weekly hour open. Comparable libraries are investing eighty two dollars an hour to run their libraries, we are operating at thirty seven dollars a day. And that's sixty six percent below average. Um, and then just breaking down our budget, so you can see where is that all going, um, the vast majority of our budget is payroll, so our, our budget is seventy three thousand dollars, seventy of that is just payroll. There's a three thousand dollar budget from the town that goes to books. Um, but the actual cost for materials, which is books, including digital books, uh, as well as movies, music compresses, et cetera, is over seventeen thousand dollars. So that's the gap that we're seeing in what is being invested in the materials that we need to purchase each year and how much we're actually spending. Um, and what does that break down to when we're making requests for library investment? The current level is a hundred and eighteen dollars a year per household, uh, from the current accounts. But we're seeing nearly two hundred thousand dollars in savings from our community when they select. And just to highlight, we have been seeing growth year over year in the use of the library, so the demand continues to go up. Um, circulation, search is how often people are borrowing, that has grown up eighty three percent since last year, compared to the year prior. Um, we've also increased our programs offered by a hundred and fifty eight percent with a three hundred and fifty six percent increase in total programming participation, so we are delivering more variation. Um, so looking ahead, based on the community survey and the strategic priority that we've outlined, we're looking at continuing to enter, that's, that's in progress. Um, and based on the community demand, both iterated to us in the feedback as well as what we are seeing in actual usage of the library, we need to increase our material program offerings and increase staffing levels, and we'll need a budget that can support that. I suppose that the comment from the old patron, he said, the library is afraid of what it has, which isn't much, it's time to support the library that other towns support. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you wanna change back to?
I'm going to, yeah.
Okay.
We can do that. We can do that, yeah. We can send that to, we will send that. Guys, and behind all that, we also have a ton of raw data, right? All the comps, I know I presented that over the years, but we have all those. You can see it. Brittany just updated the comps.
Let's connect the, uh, computer. There we go. We're good. We okay. Yeah, we're live.
So again, all that data, we'll send it to you, all that, we have all the raw data. Uh, so we have all that raw data for you guys to review as well, share that, and more information. What we don't have is a finalized printed out budget of all the details. What we do have, and I gave to you guys earlier, was just the basic utilities. Really want to start with some of the things we're, actually embarrassed to say this, had some questions on. And I should know better, because I've been doing it long enough, but, um, utilities and building expenses, right? Um, the town does cover the internet, so we're part of that, right? Water and sewer, we pay for, so it's coming out of our general fund. Again, this is getting paid for by trusts and things like that. But it goes back into that question of town building, who pays for it, kind of deal? How does that work, right? Electric, we're paying for, that's direct deposit out of our general fund. And then fuel oil, yeah, we're negotiating with you guys, but we're actually writing a check for that. That's kind of funny, because the line item is like, oh, no, no, are we not? So there's a little confusion that we need to work together on how we want to do this, right? And, and figure that one. Don't have to have an answer tonight, but that's part of the line item that we have to figure out for sure, right? Um, you can't see it, but it's in red. Anything after November on the sheet I gave you, anything after November is just an estimate based on averages. Because I took the latest information that we had, plugged it all the way in up till October, okay? And then the rest are averages. We have all that data going back, so we can easily sit down and do that. And I'm, I'm assuming that's what we have to do and come back to you guys to present that, right? But the question for you guys is, but wait a second, aren't we already paying for that? That's our question. Do fuel oil, wait, I don't know why, we don't see a check from you guys. Does that sound strange to you? Because it sounds strange that I'm even saying this. Does that make sense to you? We need a check on that. Same with electric, same with water and sewer, et cetera. So then building expenses. Yeah, we do maintain what, you know, we get the air conditioning clean with the heating rail. It is old. We are looking to do a new full system for our whole heating system. We got to get three quotes for that, so that'll be part of that. Um, we'll look for, figure out funding on that. Um, cleaning has gone up a lot. Um, Kathy would work here, um, stopped working with us, and then we have a new person, but that's up there. And that totals up to be a lot, um, about three hundred and sixty bucks a month, right? But it is helpful, and the library's never looked better. General building, zero maintenance repair. We don't really have, put line items in there. We have to. Low maintenance, the town does cover already with Lori. That's, and then a weed whack, whatever, that's in there. And then IT services, we have a contract through with you guys here. So our, our thought process was, hey, and everybody said, figure out, as Brittany showed, what is the total operating cost for the library? Come back, review that whole thing, then come back to you guys and put that in there. But I have questions on just these utilities and things from there at the top. Everything else is books, supplies, et cetera, right? Lucky, as I said at the beginning, we have the friends who've done a great job, right, to help us with that. Uh, the town does contribute three thousand dollars for books. The friends typically match that. You know, I think we're all aware where the financial aspects of the town are going into the future, and you guys can speak. Our next steps would be to put together on just the line item stuff. Um, maintenance and utilities, full budget, so you guys can see that, right? See what we have, what we can afford, what we can't afford. But on top of that, the bigger thing that Brittany's pointing to, this is FY twenty-six and beyond. We have to, we have the comps show the town, we have to start looking at what it takes to keep a director in that position, right? It's a part-time job, right? It, we are looking at other benefits, and Brittany has a comp somewhere other towns are offering. We are unfortunately the very bottom lowest. It makes it very hard, if somebody leaves a part-time job, to find somebody new to do the great work that this team is doing. Really hard, and that is the biggest problem we have. You can't do anything with a library. We'll do bigger, get new things, unless you have a human. And we technically most times have one human on staff, and that has to change. I had some personal experience in my daughter's shop down to beach where they had an incident where somebody came in, super frightening. And that's got to change. So now we got to put two people in that office, same hours, less hours? This is, this gets tricky, and a panic button, and, 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 and. So we have some real work to do. We'll put those numbers together and come back to the board, but we have to do something. And it doesn't matter who's sitting in that director seat, our number one job is to, as trustees, is to support that director. Because this library has done an amazing job over the years of what it is, and the town is responding, right? And we have the survey results, so I've received a lot more questions, so you have lots of data. So let's look at the data and come up with some good ideas on how to do it, and let's build. One final thought would be, definitely, I can't believe I haven't thought about this before, CIP plan for big maintenance funds. Put X number of dollars away for the town, but then hit it, put a cap on it, pick a number, right? We can do that. We just got to, but we've got to support the director position, because you can't do anything without that. Can't hire good staff, cannot have programming, can't do anything without that director, and we're far below.
When, when are you looking to come back?
I mean.
You got twenty-one October, four November, and eighteen November.
Well, we take it the next one. When is the next one?
The first.
Right, okay.
Uh, while we're talking here, something came to my attention the other day. Uh, the Mellon Fund, the resources you get from that, yes, that's twelve thousand a year.
No, so it varies. And what I need to do, or, yeah, we need, we were told, we got to put income into this, income. So one thing we also have to do is meet with the trustees, the trust, right? Um, to get that hammered away. I noticed they had some accounting things they have to do too. We hadn't forever. I can't even remember the last time I did it. I've been here ten years, so it's been a long time. We have to show that income, because that is, but it varies because it's market-based. Some years we get a lot, some years we get less.
We can do anything with the market, that's okay. Excellent. We'll see you then. Uh, good knowledge. Thank you, Brittany. Good information. Not public. Uh, we'll plan on seeing you on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Is that worth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, and one, one thing, if you guys could look at this utilities part, help us get that figured out, what's going on.
Technology is our friend. Uh, next thing that I want to jump into, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is, uh, we're going to jump ahead into the Personnel Policy Manual. Um, and this is something that hasn't been, when's the last time this was adjusted, Blaine, do you remember?
January first, two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen, so we're a little behind on doing that. Uh, y'all should have a copy of it. It was emailed to you. And there was like four changes that we're going to address tonight, just to reflect the current realities. Uh, the first one is on page twelve. Yeah, full-time employees, here's what it currently says, full-time employees, individuals who are regularly scheduled to work three, seven point five or more hours per week. The reality is, it's thirty-seven hours a week, so we want to make that change to the manual. And, uh, I think what I'll do is I'll do them individually. Uh, any comments, complaints, should you guys have issues? All right, so I'll, uh, make a motion, we change that to thirty-seven from thirty-seven-five. Second?
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Next, next item is on page thirteen. Uh, currently says the town's pay period is once a week. The correction is the town pay period is bi-weekly. Simple admin change. I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Next item is health insurance, and that's on page seventeen. The language, uh, I'll go through it quickly. It's a town provides medical and hospital insurance to full-time employees in accordance with terms adopted by the Select Board. Effective January thirteenth, so you can tell how dated that is. The new language, health insurance, the town provides medical insurance to full-time employees in accordance with terms adopted by the Select Board. Effective one January twenty-twenty-five, the full-time employee contribution to health insurance will be five percent. The employer offers health insurance coverage for all full-time employees at a ninety-five-five split. The health insurance deductible will be three thousand per planned member. The employee is responsible for a payment of the first fifteen hundred dollars per planned member. The employee will be reimbursed up to fifteen hundred dollars per planned member from Health Trust after meeting their required deductible. So that's just a recap of the way the health insurance policy is. I'll make a motion and accept that.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the last one, paid time off effective the old, uh, language. It dealt with, uh, police officers not using, uh, more than ten days PTO last contract that we worked with in budget. Paid off, paid time off effective one January twenty-twenty-five, employees are only permitted to carry over twenty days of PTO into the next year unless approval has been granted by the Select Board. All unused PTO days over twenty days at the end of each year shall expire and cannot be carried over into the next year except as otherwise provided herein. Any questions, comments?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, that covers the changes we need to get in place for the personnel policy.
Just the paper read. I thought we could.
Oh, we did that.
Did you go over that?
We did that. So we got those four items taken care of. Uh, we have had no Planning Board or Conservation Commission meetings since the last Select Board meeting.
I could add, uh, the Planning Board also saw a subdivision for one oh-four Piscassic, which I left out of last time's update, and that was approved. They were doing significant clearing to improve sightlines because the driveway is moving, so that's what's happening there. Will you seal those trees down?
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You, I.
Allison.
Do that now, or do it under the discussion of all units?
Would you like to do it now, or you, because I had some issues to address on that later, but. Let me, let me finish the next one on the contracts, and then we'll jump to that. That's our fair album. Okay, uh. Due to stormwater treatment with the rain slash rain garden and the gutter situation, we received the bids, uh, before the last Select Board meeting. We opened them at the last Select Board meeting. We gave them to Bill Mather, who was heading that lash up, uh, to analyze the contracts, find out which was more better. Uh, he did so, but we communicated with the board. I communicated with the board once I heard back from Bill. Time is of the essence, because we had to get these contracts signed so we can be reimbursed by the state. The planning is, and everything has to be done. You may have noticed some of the work going on out front. Uh, so we did, I did sign the contracts for these agreements. Uh, the gutter one was signed, when was that, signed today? And the rain garden one was signed, uh, last week, so just, uh.
Just out of curiosity, can I take a look?
Yeah. So the guy, the contracts have been signed, the work is in place, the state is happy with us, because we're going to have this done in a timely manner. The money will be reimbursed. Had time not have been of the essence, we would have opened the contracts, gotten feedback from Mr. Mather, and then, uh, voted on it the next. That was not a viable option to do this.
Good.
All right, so I guess we're retroactively moving these. I'll make a motion to approve both contracts.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Allison, let's do, let's cover your, that you want to bring to the board, and then I've got some issues, a couple of agenda items for the board also to discuss, and it's perfect for here.
Um, yeah, so just a couple of things. Um, Conservation Commission members met with Town Council last night to discuss some of the legal background with Vernon Family Farm. I think it was particularly helpful, because we have several members who don't have a lot of, um, don't have a lot of that background, so that was very helpful. Um, just for the record, there was a resident here who was concerned that we were holding an illegal meeting, because the meeting had not been noticed. Based on Town Council guidance, I believe that that, we, we were following, um, the format that was recommended by Town Council. Um, I also did a little due diligence on my own. I have no doubt that the meeting that we were holding was in fact entirely legal, did not need to be noticed, because it was a discussion with Town Council, so I just want to, I want that on the record. Um, and then we have the regular Conservation Commission meeting on the twentieth, and that will be where we will have a discussion and public input on parking and other concerns at Vernon Farm. That's what I have on that, and then I move on.
There has, there has been some concern that has been voiced to me by more than a few residents in town. Uh, confusion on their part is the difference between a public hearing and a public meeting. And there's limitations on what the Conservation Committee, Commission can do for a public hearing, basically wetlands or property acquisition. And for a public hearing, what's going to transpire on the twentieth is not within those restrictions of the RSA. Therefore, this will be a public meeting, but what it will be, correct me if I'm wrong, fully open. You have rules of engagement that will be strictly enforced as to time limits, speaking. And so there will be input from the community, and it will not be a closed, complete engagement. So I did it, like I say, I did have numerous people ask me, well, the CTU says this, but they're not having it, and so we put that to bed, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, so that's completely correct. There will be, and that was one of the things we discussed last night, was how, how that engagement happens in a way that's respectful and gives everybody time to speak.
We, we achieved the end result that's wanted with an, with an open engagement with the community, even though it's under a different name.
And we believe that that satisfies the requests in the letter that the town received.
And I'll concur with that, having read that diligently. Um. I have. Mine wants to sit down while I go through this, but this relates directly to the Conservation Commission. Did, uh, Bill, uh, I'm sorry, Bob Elliott, last week, did you see the meeting last week?
I did, like, armed.
In regards to, uh, alternate membership?
Yeah.
Okay, so alternate membership on the Conservation Commission, our state thirty-six dash eight Conservation Commission control. And that is this bad boy right here. Uh, thirty-six dash eight colon three covers a composition of the commission, three to seven members. Thirty-six dash eight colon three, one, our I as in India, appointed by, is appointed by the body, Select Board. Alternate membership is a colon three, from a number of two, alternate members are appointed in a like manner. In nineteen, ten March nineteen ninety-two, the town voted via warrant article to establish the Conservation Commission. And the new vote, Newfields Conservation Commission bylaws were effective of, uh, thirty-one December of ninety-two. And within those bylaws, section four, organization, Conservation Commission members are appointed by the Select Board. And state law is to be followed as to vacancies and alternates. There was some confusion and discussion and consternation at the last Select Board meeting about alternates. And there was a position taken by a member of the audience that this would require a warrant article to be voted on in March. Uh, subsequent to that meeting, I had a phone call with the Hampshire Municipal Association Counselor Jonathan Powell. And he very clearly stated that per thirty-six colon eight dash three, the Select Board can appoint alternates to the Conservation Commission. And that phone call was on Friday, twenty-six September at one zero six. So I want to throw that out there. Uh, thoughts?
Yeah, so I have the, the bylaws here. You say essentially the same thing. We've had alternates. I was an alternate. I mean, I don't think it's an issue. I don't think, I don't see any reason why that's an issue or why the contract.
And I was surprised it was last week.
Yeah, I honestly was too. Like, the, the, the chain often is that when you have a full commission, such as we have now, then you have an alternate. The chain often is that when you have a full commission such as we have now, then you have an alternate. And then when you have someone who leaves, this is exactly what happened with me. Then you have an alternate who's been there, who has experience, who can step in. So. I, I have no issue with it. I think it's what we've done in the past.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Excellent. So, uh, I guess what we would say is, what was your thoughts on the number of alternates? Two?
I would go with one.
Okay.
Um, because. The board is already seven people. You get up, the board is already seven people. You get up to eight, it starts to get unwieldy.
Just that the alternates though are not participants unless they're filling in the seat.
Yeah, they, my experiences are chatty. And they should be. Um. And we have not had, I also want to say for the record, I think there was a comment that the Conservation Commission has had instances where we did not have enough members. I don't believe that that has happened recently. We have had meetings that were canceled because we did not have things on the agenda that were important. And that's a little bit different.
Definitely.
Um, and we don't have, we're not like the planning board where we commonly have things that really require a vote. We just don't really have the situation where you have to have a forum, otherwise somebody else can't get their work done. That, you know, right now, things are a little bit different, but generally speaking, we don't run into that.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to say though, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on how. Commission members are appointed. I don't know quite how it works with the other boards, um, but the. Foymans rest with the select board. You appoint. Commission members. Um, there have been different ways that process has gone forward. So I think the last round. We had a pretty good process. You, we had letters, we had expressions of interest. We had someone who had been coming to. Board meetings, the commission made a recommendation. You acted on it, that person was elected. Um, so two things, one, right now, I think that we have two people who sent in letters. That I don't think have had any kind of formal response. So there's, that's just a, a sort of a box checking thing. We should get back to people when they send us letters. And it's a little bit awkward because the letters came to you. Do I respond? Do you respond?
Yeah, I believe I forwarded to you.
You did, and I, I can respond. I just, um. Yeah, there's, there's a little bit of a.
Because it usually has usually been that. What will happen is the Conservation Commission will take these candidates, for lack of a better term, review them and then make their recommendation. Select board. I will digress for a second and say. That when we had that change in protocol, probably what eighteen months ago. That's because the position had been open for two months. And we hadn't seen any action on that and an opportunity presented to fill it. And so we filled that for that. As a board, we fill that opening. Myself, I would much prefer to have it come through your recommendation.
Could, could we have a protocol where the Conservation Commission? Was when, when somebody leaves the commission. The Concom, we've also had some gaps in communication, so sorry, trains. Um, when somebody leaves the commission, um, the Conservation Commission notifies the select board and Sue, so the town knows.
We can post it because Keisha, we do have that. Protocol in place now.
We don't always need to post it. So for instance, if we have had, as in this past case, we had someone who was coming to meetings that we knew wanted to be interested.
I would, excuse me for interrupting. I would like to get into the policy and the protocol, and I think it would be more prudent. Every time there is an opening, it is posted.
Okay.
That way, it's open to the community. The community is cognizant of it. And, uh. You could have Yule Gibbons or somebody just come out of the woodwork who's been doing it his whole life. Uh. But it would still be up to you guys to make the recommendation to the select board.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Um, and then. The Conservation Commission will notify the select board of their recommendation. By the next Conservation Commission meeting after the resignation. Does that make sense? So then they have a chance to meet, to make a recommendation. If they don't do that. You know, if for some reason the Concom is not able to do that. Then the board can act as a ceasefire, but that would be the thing I would like to see.
Thing that I'd like to see happen, uh, would be to go, hey, Allison. Where you guys at on this? Instead of us reacting.
You can call me up first, but, um. Yeah, I, I would like the, the Concom to have a chance to make that recommendation, but I understand that if it doesn't happen in reasonable amount of time and. Other actions might need to happen.
So that was a two-month window there. Are you a middle of the drawing up these bullet points and sending them to the board?
Yep. All right.
Any questions?
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
Mark?
Just, I mean. Do you have any comments? That was just sort of what I thought up. In terms of this, how this protocol could go. Would that make sense based on your experience?
That's, yeah, especially in the public. Okay.
Posting it publicly so that everyone has an opportunity.
And, and that way we get in the habit of every position on every board. That's just the way we do it. So it's wide open to the community.
And that two-month opening was a year ago because it was, it was my seat that was up.
Well, time flies when you're having fun.
He's not on the board anymore. I, that's all I got. Anything else?
Thank you. Thanks, Keith.
Uh, you see if I got anything else on it, the Concom. No, ma'am. Thank you. So we'll look for a nomination. For an alternate.
Yes.
Thank you, Allison. Uh, we did receive a, uh, letter of appreciation from a resident. And she wanted to compliment, uh. Jeff Beanstra, Scott Buxton, and John Trainer, the DD for assisting in a medical call. And so she sent kudos. Uh. To those people and to the department and. Received a copy of it. And I would just like to acknowledge and our appreciation. For this town runs on volunteers and. And even the police officers and our volunteers are incredibly diligent and incredibly professional. And I appreciate that, that work ethic. And that attention to detail. Uh, let's go down to veterans' tax credits. And two of them, they'll both be effective in twenty twenty-six. Uh, and we'll just keep them for the, have you had a chance to look at these?
Mm-hmm.
I've, I've reviewed the documents in, uh. In detail. And, uh, I will make a recommendation that we accept both of these and approve both of these.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Let me give this, Keisha?
Please.
Yes.
Alright, next item on the agenda, I'm going to save prior minute meetings for a minute. Uh, let's jump down to town office services fees. What this entails. Sue, which she gets hit with a FOIA, Freedom of Information. Question. It cost her and ladies in the office a bunch of time. And we are finally jumping into the century and we're gonna, she has put together. Uh, charge schedule, reschedule for doing this. Uh, copies quarter page, electronic checklist is twenty-five dollars, but, uh, the electronic checklist is twenty-five dollars. Mark checklist, quarter page, absentee ballot list, five dollars. Notary fees, tax assessment cards, tax bills, tax maps, and it just kind of makes up for a little bit of time. Which she is required to engage and spend on a FOIA. Any questions? Cap?
Oh, that's fair.
Mark?
No. All good.
Okay, in that case, I'll make a motion that we. Accept this schedule and approve it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am. Can you come to the microphone, please?
Quick question. I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear well. And was there a charge for absentee ballots?
Oh, an absentee ballot list.
That was, just wait, wait a minute.
I looked at that too.
Uh, we have two. Three requests for town hall rentals. And just as a note. Uh, we're putting an addendum on the town hall rental form. That will say that the room will be returned to the setup that was there when you arrived. Keisha, you had to come and set up the addendum?
Yes.
Yeah. So if somebody uses the town hall for a meeting, a dance, uh, we need the room set back up as it was when they found it. So our folks aren't spending the time doing it. Uh, the first one is for. Tom Welton for the Newfields Republicans, non-alcohol. Seventy-five dollars, watching twenty-five to thirty people. And the date is on three November. I'll just hit them all three at once. I don't expect there'll be an issue with it. If anybody does, you can sing out when we're done. Uh. The same organization for one December, non-alcoholic. Twenty-five to thirty people, uh. People. Uh, this one is looking at over a hundred people. This one. Is for Lord de Pla. And it is for a staff meeting for Waypoint. And it is a non-alcoholic event, expecting twenty-five people, and that'll be on. Find the date here, on nineteenth November. Does anybody have an issue with any of these? Okay, I'll make a motion when we accept all three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your signature table. Hey, Keisha. When you're filling out the form, if you can't read them, tell them they've got to do it over again, please.
Oh, yeah, I didn't look at it until she sent me a notice. I had just put it.
But you can't read it?
I just scanned it and it was.
Got it.
It was a test.
Got you. Uh. Okay, prior meeting minutes, we have minutes for the second and for the twenty-third. We tabled the minutes for the second at the last meeting. Um. Has everybody had a chance to review?
Uh, I have. Um. I think the twenty-third looks good. I think the second needs a little bit added. I sent the correspondence to Keisha and let her know that I would. Send her some notes on that and then we can maybe re-review it at our next meeting.
We can do that. Kind of these guys right here. But you, I think, I think we probably got the symptoms.
Sure.
I thought we paid those. Uh, in that case, I'll, uh, again, we'll table the second, if that works for you guys.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll make a motion, uh, you've got Mark for the twenty-third. Make a motion, we accept the minutes for the twenty-third. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, so. Last month. Primex, the insurance entity. Came through and did an assessment of the police department and the fire department. On the, uh, correction, it was in August. And they came through and they basically did a complete walkthrough of the police department, facilities, resources, ability to comply with best-in-current practices. And they did the same thing with the fire department. Uh, you should have received a copy of this report. And you can see that there's numerous. For lack of a better term, let's call it what it is, there's discrepancies on what the best current practice is. And this is a result of the physical footprint, both of the fire department and the fire station and of the town hall police department. So, uh. These are things that we need to consider and put into our long-term consideration. Uh, I think it would be appropriate that we develop. An entity which can sit down and analyze these in depth and start exploring resources. And opportunities to resolve these matters. Taking into consideration long-term viability of the fire department. Uh. Alternative and contingent courses of action, should things not. Should the maintainability of the volunteer department, uh, continue to surface? And so, uh, I would just. If you have not read them in detail, I would encourage you to do so. And it's a start because if we just keep our head in our sand and ignore it. Then when we decide we need to do something. It will be a little late on the pro- process. The other thing about having a plan and coming together, we get such a board together. Uh, once we have a plan in place. And then when grants become available, which they do with some regularity. Having the plan, at least within the four corners of the page, put together. Will expedite. The accessibility and the availability of the grants. Because if you try and put the doc, supporting documentation together after the grant becomes public, you're going to lose every time. So, any, Wayne, would you, anything you'd like to add?
No, I would like to move and maybe set this on the agenda for the next meeting. Um. Regarding the plan moving forward, such as maybe starting a committee.
Okay, I will, uh, reference that. And. If you can remember also sending a bullet point, a text on that also, or an email.
Um, does any of this fall into the CIP as a department or is it because of the separateness?
I think it's more not so much CIP, but. Just the physical structure in the plant that we get, the plants that we have.
There's some critical needs on there. I went over it with a fine-tooth comb. And there's some really important, uh, needs that have to be accounted for and have to be addressed.
Uh, alright, uh, and I'll put that on there again for the next meeting. Keisha, can you make a notation of that? Okay. On, uh, fourteen October, New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security will be meeting with the police department, fire department. And emergency, uh, management. And this will be to initiate an update of the town emergency operations plan. Uh, something that is due seventeen was the last one?
It was R Street on seventeen, last fully updated was two thousand twelve. Yeah. Um. It's an important thing to have that in place and update because a lot of federal funding are. Tied to certain things, including the extension. Plan that we have, and since we're outdated, uh, we could be eliminated or. Excluded on any grants or revival.
Mm-hmm. Alright. Uh, Chief, you want to give us an update on your certification process?
State accreditation is still, um. Talking through it, we've got to hit some of the major, um. Liability, um. Policies such as use of force, body one cameras, rest procedures, uh, those have been completely done, obviously been signed off on those. Uh, the ones that we're working on now, uh, parking procedures, prisoner transports, which are, are high liability. Policies that you make, need to make sure that they, you know, fit state accreditation. So. We're doing the policies that be embedded by our state creditor, uh, who we hired earlier here, just to make sure we're staying compliant and state accreditation.
Is vehicle pursuit on the agenda?
Pursuit is on there as well.
Okay. How many, uh, more X's in the block to get?
The policies?
Yeah, how many more you got to go?
A hundred fifty.
So you got four or five down?
These are the major ones. These are in-depth, multiple pages. As you get into some less policies, they, they're just a little bit in-depth. These, these, you have to really dye your eyes across your teeths.
Hmm. Thousand mile march starts with. Thousand Mile March starts with one step, right? Uh, yeah. ERA and the discrepancies as far as warrant article five and 10, where are we at on that?
So I've been in touch with the charitable trust folks, and I have a date to have a conversation on the 13th of October. I also spoke with Derek. And I spoke with him while I drafted an email to explain what I was looking for from them. And he thought that was worded perfectly. He looks forward to a response from them. The person who I'll be dealing with happens to be out of the office till the 12th. And that's why it's waiting until the 13th.
Okay.
It's looking like a one-word change, which we might not need to do any formal more action. The word fund could easily be changed to the word town. And that might resolve everything. But we do want to make sure we're crossing all our t's and dotting our i's, that that's an adequate fix and nothing else needs to happen. So that's what it's looking like.
They want paper, give them paper, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, audit discrepancies.
The last I heard, I talked with our, I'm waiting on the more recent trustees of trust funds meeting. And so I did talk together with Steve Yevich about their recording. Some of the discrepancies that showed up in the audit was a lack of properly recording what had been happening correctly. And they will tighten that up. And then the frequency of meeting, they can tighten that up. The other piece, what was noted to be missing is that our town doesn't actually have an investment policy for the town. The trustees have an investment policy through three bearings for the trusts. But it would behoove the town to adopt a town-wide investment policy. And Steve went ahead and shared a copy from another town. I believe that got also sent to you. And we could put that on an agenda if we want to move forward with that. That's yet to be determined.
Okay.
Yeah.
We need to resolve these by the end of the year, by the 31st, so we don't get dinged on these again next year.
Sure.
And I think, I think we should be able to.
Yeah, if we look maybe more towards November, we could look at that. Maybe one of our November meetings.
All right, Kathy, you have anything else?
I do want to say that the work continues on the Main Street traffic safety topic. And our last small meeting was an information finding meeting only. The meeting notes are available now, and some information shared from the RPC is available. There's just a little bit more information that was discussed to be gathered. And once that's all together, I think we can also set a time in one of our meetings to review it and make a decision as a select board as to next best steps. I would imagine that would include a public meeting, could possibly be incorporated into a select board meeting, or could be a standalone meeting. But until we have all the information together, the next best steps don't make sense to determine at this time. But we are rounding the bend on wrapping that up. Is there, is anything, Chief Young, you want to add about that?
Before you jump in, I just want to make absolutely sure that any public meetings are fully noticed. And so that we don't have folks go, hey, I live on Main Street, I have a business on Main Street. I was not talking to some of us.
Sure. And it gets updated only in this meeting. This is the only meeting in which updates about that process are being discussed. And this would be the meeting in which any decision about future meetings would be made. So that's not anything that I do independently or that anyone's doing independently. That is strictly done by this board.
All right, you got anything else?
No.
Anything from the floor? In that case, I will make a motion to adjourn.
This is.
Step to the microphone, please. And Dan, by yourself?
Yes, this is a select board meeting or town council meeting? Select board, that's what I thought. So I'm just curious, I.
Can you say your name for that?
Diane Vaccararo. Yes. So the, I spoke with someone at the town office today, and they said I should file the, basically, I wanted to file a complaint.
Okay, that will be, that will be done with the select board.
Okay.
But that is a personnel, it sounds like a personnel matter.
Yes.
Non-public.
Okay. So how do I, do I send an email to?
Send an email to the board.
In order to get on the agenda for that?
Oh, yeah, and we'll set it up for non-public.
Okay, perfect. And so.
And we can't do that in public.
Yeah. So that takes place on the same night as the town council meeting or at a separate time?
No, our next, our next meeting is on the 4th.
On the 4th, okay.
Twenty first of October.
Twenty first of October, okay. All right. So I'll send an email about that. Thank you.
All right, more times. Did we both do adjourn? I don't.
You did.
You did.
We're adjourned.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.